Okay, um, call meeting in order. We have a quorum. Reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'm moving to approve.
Motion. Motion made second. additions, corrections, comments? Lacking any? All in favor? Any opposed? Harry. Uh, I'll amend the, uh, agenda. Uh, introduce Dave Botar. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll move down to new business. Uh, section C. Down to Brutus.
Reason being for discussions on acquisition.
Acquisition of land.
Yes.
Can we go into the executive session, please?
So moved.
On favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Harry. Yep.
That's for the potential purchase or sale of real property.
Right, subject. Andy.
In touch.
Thank you.
Really fast all of a sudden.
Those communications.
Okay, so we've got, um, in your.
Hi, thank you.
I did it here. Um, there's mostly just your monthly stuff. Um, the two different things where we could receive a land lease payment from Patterson. Um, for twenty twenty five use of the industrial park. And then we did receive a refund from CNS. Uh, we inadvertently overpaid a bill. It was something that crossed in the mail. We previously paid something that showed up on a new invoice and, um, they brought to our attention and they refunded those monies. Um, but everything else is your standard monthly expenses.
I'll move to accept. Second, discussion. Questions? All favor?
Alright.
Oh, Harry. Uh, reported treasurer.
So there's just a few things that I want to point out on the financials. Um, on the profit and loss statement, you'll notice there's the twelve thousand five hundred dollars on the bad debt expense at the bottom. Um, that is, uh, Michael had asked me to write off the county reimbursement for the SBDC contract that we were expecting. Um, so that is offsetting the services line of revenue. So that services line nets out to about eight hundred dollars. So it was for, for Michael's time on the agricultural grant. Uh, but that's what the twelve five on the bad debt expense line is. Um, right under that, you'll see a, about a sixteen hundred dollar negative number on the loan and interest expense line. Um, that is a correction to a prior year entry that needed to be cleaned up just to clean up the accounts payable. Um, there was a year-end entry. You get that duplicated on January first and, um, that just needed to be cleared out. Um, so that's what that is. And then, we've been cleaning out the accounts payable line. There is one large entry that's still outstanding. It was from a prior audit journal entry. Um, I'm gonna have Bon and Dio help us to clear that one out. It's, it's a, something the Highlander. And the amount ended up getting negotiated and put into the system again, so, um, we just need to reverse that entry and then I'm afraid to mess it up, so the fun idea is gonna help us with that. But that's why your accounts payable look so high. There's about, I think it's about sixty-five thousand dollars that is not a real payable in there. The rest of it aligns with the bills that you see in your packets. Um, but due to government lines has about nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars on it. That is, those are the last couple of fees from twenty twenty-four that still need to get dispersed. You just haven't, um, dispersed any pilot payments to the Malavia area jurisdictions since we decided to, um, push out those fees. So those will get dispersed in January. Um, otherwise, all of our pilot payments in twenty twenty-five have gone out and they went out on time within the thirty days. So, uh, we're in good shape for the audit in that regard.
Thank you. Motion approved the treasurer report.
I second.
Questions? All favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Executive Director update.
Okay, so you have my, uh, monthly report in your packet here, but as always, I have some walk-on updates for you. Um, for our sunny solar projects, Lowkey Brill has been engaging, um, with the Cordelia team. It doesn't look like they were able to make the call, but they do have some of their labor reporting, um, outcomes within your packet as well. We should be receiving tomorrow and if not tomorrow, on Monday, their labor reporting for, uh, the latest quarter. From that, we're going to be sussing out what the mitigation payment fees are, uh, per the contract we have with them. A quick reminder, they committed to utilizing at least twenty-five percent local labor of their total construction budget. Um, if they don't, we charge them more. If they've used more than twenty-five percent, we charge them less. So, that's how, how we, uh, set that up there.
Excuse me, Michael.
Yeah.
The, uh, they were referred to the outlined area. There's a reference there. There's, there's the Kyuga County and then there's the defined area.
Surrounding.
Defined, what, what are they using as the defined area?
So we have that as all surrounding counties of Kyuga. So that's Seneca, Wayne, Ontario, Tompkins, Anadaga, Cortland, Oswego, and Madison. So that's our defined area as part of our local labor policy.
So, not really great on local, but pretty good for the defined area I saw. It's about seventy percent.
So we would, we definitely want as much within Kyuga County as possible. And then we give, you know, some leniency if you're within the immediate surrounding area. But anything outside of that, now you're really starting to stretch it. And part of the intent with the local labor policy specific to these renewable projects is we will redeploy those monies back into the workforce training, education sector to build up that capacity within our county and within our region. So I thought it was a very intelligent one that, uh, we came up with last year and, uh, we're going to start collecting some monies on that very thing very soon. Um, moving on, as chaired with the board over the last month, I'm pleased to announce that we successfully closed on the sale of land to Kyuga Milk. In addition to closing on the pilot with, uh, Dunkevick. Um, with Kyuga Milk as chaired, we had, uh, part of that transaction look to transition ownership of the lighting infrastructure within the park, um, through a series of back and forths with the milk plant and a recent discussion with our, uh, council as well as our chair yesterday is, uh, what we decided in working with them is that because there's multiple tenants within the park, we will continue to maintain the lights, but build back the tenants for the usage of it. Um, any improvements, uh, to be done immediately will, uh, be on Kyuga Milk's dime. Um, but over the next year here, one of the things I'm gonna work to do and had tried to is the county technically owns the lighting infrastructure. It's also entitled indeed for the roadway going through there. So we got some ground covered there, never really crossed the finish line. So we're gonna re-approach that, but in the meantime, we have to make sure the lights are on, so the tenants aren't running into each other out there.
Michael, before you go on, I'm slow today. Did you not want any kind of a resolution to start the, the studying of that property?
We went through that resolution.
That was part of the resolution? I thought it was just an opt. I'm sorry.
That the resolution can contain the option as well as engagement with, or to start. But excuse me. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Alright. Um, for the small solar project that we, uh, approved over the last month, uh, Justin and his colleague are working with their attorneys on the closing items, which we anticipate to be, uh, completed before the end of this year. We're also working with Lowkey Brill, uh, to perform the labor monitoring services for that project as well. Quick reminder, we're not paying for it. The company is paying for it. Um, on that end there. Uh, next month, I'm anticipating to have a, uh, letter of intent for purchase of some land we own within the Aurelius IDA Park. This is a very small two-portion parcel um, on the, on the corner there, uh, across the street from the milk plant. And if that happens to go through, the last tiny parcel we're gonna have is going to be on the end cap along five and twenty, which is about two acres there. Uh, so we're, we're essentially out of property over in the Aurelius IDA mark.
You should put a sign on them.
I was thinking about it myself and, uh,
Two acre.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
Dunkin' Don't.
Yeah.
Kyuga County IDA, big number thing.
Looking to do that and I'm gonna see if the milk plant might deal up to it since they have a sign up.
What do you?
So I can follow up on that item there. Um, last for the project updates, one more. As usual, sewer update. I am pleased to tell you, we did receive the grant monies from Empire State Development. So that money, that money came in the bank last month. Um, we, as shared last month, had a dead end with, uh, the federal government and that grant because of the shutdown. The government is not open. I just heard from our project manager this week. They are under review and hopefully, fingers crossed, we will receive those monies before end of years. And that's about seventy-three grand we expect from, um, the EDA. And once that's done, we're essentially done with that entire project with the exception of some ongoing reporting that we'll do in collaboration with Water and Sewers, the ultimate owner of the line and a co-recipient of that grant there. Um, so I'm gonna try to move a little faster through some of these other updates, uh, in more specific items here. Um, the energy summit that has been organized by Senator Nizolio and Locate FLX is set up for December first. I believe I sent that out to, uh, the board here. I'll be one of the panel members focused on the economic development impacts of energy, uh, and its impact within that area. David Botar is also going to be, uh, panelist there. Registration is open. Happy to, uh, send that link along to anybody or sign you up if you need some assistance there. That should be very well attended. We're gonna have, uh, representatives from across the spectrum. And, uh, it should, it should be a great event there. On a very similar topic, uh, both Tracy, Bob and I attended a NICEAG, uh, meeting yesterday where, um, it was largely around their proposed, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, rate case. As everyone here knows, costs have been doing nothing but going up. I think they had said they would be sending out the presentation following the meeting there. Um, some great information. I'll give Tracy a lot of credit for raising a salient point that every time we've had inquiries of potential site prospects, uh, from developers, we need NICEAG to engage immediately and they're slow to the draw on that there. So, um, I think they heard that loud and clear. And thanks again, Tracy, for raising.
It's an open moment.
I, it was a great point that.
Look aggressive.
It, it was gently done. Um, but it's, it's, it's very important. And while they're looking to deploy a significant amount of money, it still doesn't get us to where we need to be in a pretty short amount of time, but that's part of what this, uh, energy summit on the first is going to be addressing there. Moving along to some of the other high topic, uh, items here. Um, on the office space front, uh, I'll go in order as, as I have it here. I did hear back from Elaine Daly. She has rescinded her request, uh, for use of space, uh, for the Office of Emergency Management there. Um, I do have various, uh, cost options for tech that aren't, uh, included in your packet with the exception of some of the printer options. Um, and I'll come back to that in a second. I did reach out to CCC for furniture. Their director of procurement, uh, has been out of state. So as soon as he's back in state, he's gonna let me know. I did reach, you know, out to him through the president. They're certainly willing to share any furniture they have to offset that cost. If not, I more or less went back to what, um, Andy had put together, uh, a couple of months ago and, you know, solidified, here's what else we would be looking at as part of it. Um, so that's roughly seventeen hundred dollars. That would be a conference room, table, chairs, desk, filing cabinet, trash bag or, uh, trash cans. But that substantially gets everything up to speed on that.
You approved the money. There's no sense waiting for use for it.
Okay, so I'll, so I'll pause the cause on that there. Um, and just move ahead on, on that. Uh, the last item then was really what I had put out there. That's in your packet is for printer. Andy, I know you have some thoughts on there. I specifically reached out to Xerox, um, on that. I'm working with them previously, so we have an outright purchase for lease option. Uh, with the lease option over a five-year period, you are going to spend more, but you are going to get, uh, printer service. So they'll be doing any maintenance and repairs and, um, on service calls as the machine, uh, may require from time to time there. Um, if you do the outright purchase, more of that cost goes back onto the IDA. So just food, food for thought on that there, but Andy, I think you and I could probably have a side conversation since you just pointed out the money's already been approved, so we can go from that. Um, budget's been formally, uh, submitted into the, uh, state system. As Tracy said earlier, full pilot billing is complete without issue. We have that account set up, so that should be very clean as part of our, our audit. Uh, the last item here, I don't know if you wanna talk about it right now or not. I think part of it is up to the governance committee. Is for your annual meeting, whether or not to have that in December or January, but as part of that, um, I've reached out to both the Ends of Aurora and Springside Inn about hosting the event. They're both open, uh, to host us on either date, either December or January. Uh, the cost options are very similar between the two. Um, I will say about the Ends of Aurora, you've supported four projects there, uh, over the years. And one of the items that's been on my mind and brought to the board numerous times is um, what's going on with Wells College? And this is the last point I'll share with the board is I did have the opportunity to have dinner with an overseas investor uh, over the last month, along with a couple of other, uh, local developer, developers. And, uh, there seems to be some significant potential there, but again, considering the size and scope of what that project may entail, um, that's a little bit slower moving, but in all conversations, they very, very much want the IDA's involvement as part of all of that.
So, annual meeting, when did you wanna do that?
It's my recommendation, uh, that you move it to January. And the reason for that being is we've had a couple of new chairs over the last couple of years. You have three board members, yourself, Andy. Uh, Ray and John are officers. We don't know if they're going to be reappointed. So if in December, this board decides to appoint members within those positions, it may be undone by whoever the chair is in January. It's happened the last couple of years. So what I want to have some insurance for the board is who is going to be on the board because it's left over.
The, uh, chairman to appoint it. I think it's, uh, first week in January. So we should know that your organization, yeah.
So, uh, I, I agree. I think you should wait until January. That gets my support too, as a governance committee person, so yeah.
Well, we can do the compliments. Uh,
Yeah.
separate of the lunch.
For sure. Absolutely. But for the reasons we discussed, I think January makes sense to me.
For that, that does make sense.
Okay, so, January.
What, what day in January, Michael?
I don't have the calendar right in front of me.
The January fifteenth? The third Thursday, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be the fifteen, because early is the first of Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you're
January fifteenth. What time, Michael?
MRB twenty-six.
Hold on, hold on. Wait, stop.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we, we typically have had it at noon and that's what, um, I have between the ends and Springside. Is, is there a preference between the ends or Springside?
I think, I think the ends would be interesting, I think. One, yeah.
You said you were in itself.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. I will reach out to them.
Open button.
Well.
Whoa, whoa. Have to try once in a while, you know?
You know Sue as well as I do. Know that.
MRB twenty-six administration services proposal update.
Do you have more to say on the office space update? At this point?
No.
Okay, great. Um, so, are you having your packet the updated admin services proposal? Um, it just says the updated hourly rates, the flat fee for the year is exactly the same. So the, uh, monthly flat fee um, is this what you saw before? This addresses the question you had about the annual adjustments.
Yes, and that's what the board requested was we don't want to have maybe adjusted. So when I reached out to Tracy, she said, coincidentally, we're updating or finalizing those rates. So I put it back in the packet so you could see that.
Governance committee update.
You know, we, we really said, said we would defer until Jan.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Right. But we thought we should have a social media policy.
That's a good idea.
Hmm.
And not, and any social media, but.
Not either. What's that time? I don't. But, uh, you thought we should do that.
I think it's, it's kind of more than just social media, right? So we were saying public relation, public affairs. So just on a whole, you know, it's not just, because I think it to me, I'm old. You say social media, I'm thinking about these platforms like the Facebook and et cetera, but I think we, we wanted it to be just more encompassing than that. It'd be nicer.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I don't know if you want me to look for something, Michael, or if you want to, or.
I, I can, uh, certainly take a look there and can work with Justin and Rec on language of where it should be talking in any one of our policies. If not, perhaps a standalone policy. And then I'll look to bring that back to the governance committee for its review and, uh, approval before it's full board.
Yeah.
Goes on it. Okay.
Yeah, you can just email.
That's all we have to do.
Got your end of report?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh. We're, we're.
Okay.
Well, the, the nominations, I guess we probably jumped the gun. We're not gonna look at that until January, until after the legislators meet and appoint.
Whatever.
Yeah.
You're not going to recommend appointments until after we meet? Is that your policy?
Okay.
Anything else for unfinished?
I just, I would like to bring up, two months ago, we had the county planning director and the, uh, of city manager there asking for us to participate in that uh, housing study that they were going to do. I proposed last month that we do pay something. I think you brought up that you'd like to know the status of the grant. And I talked with the city manager yesterday. They've completed the application for the grant. It's been accepted. Uh, they anticipate knowing in December though, that the grant will be approved. And I would like to propose that we do uh, say that we will give them twenty thousand of the thirty thousand they have not saved money for, subject to them getting the grant.
Michael, do you have any updates of speaking with the city regarding that?
So as Ms. Marshall just said, they have applied for the Northern Borders Regional Grant, which should be about a hundred thousand dollars. There's no guarantee you're going to get it. They have very high level of confidence, um, as these types of studies are in high demand and we're in a target area for it. Um, they should know whether or not they've been awarded that. Uh, as Ms. Marshall said, over the next month, I'm not sure if it's going to be the full amount. Um, I also can't recall offhand, uh, some of the other funding gaps they have right then. I will remind the board that we did speak about this, um, last month. And the recommendation was, let's wait to hear back from, uh, Carrie and Jenny on the status of that grant and come back with a more specific ask if nobody else is providing any assistance of funding on this. And through that, we're also gonna have to go through our own process to say we need our name on this and we've gotta work with the attorneys as, you know, a, uh, uh, co-recipient of the, the study itself.
Yeah.
That being said, I do very much support the study, but the amount thereof and everything, just wait until we hear back of what they, their ultimate ask is gonna be.
I would support that recommendation. I think it's premature for us to commit ourselves to an amount, you know. To your point, you don't know how much they're going to get. And maybe when we do know, we might wanna give them more than what you're suggesting, Mr. Marshall. So I think we should probably hold off to hear as to the outcome of it. And then I think with the information, with the facts, then we can, you know, make a decision, make the best decision. That would be my two cents.
I don't agree with that, but whatever the board wants to do, I think.
We think.
I think they should know that we are willing to participate in it. I think it's a program that needs to be done. And.
What was your proposal again? I'm sorry.
I would like, they're, they're, they left thirty thousand dollars of having what they think the study's gonna cost. They feel they're going to get. The grant has been submitted and been approved, which it hadn't since when they were here. Uh, they feel the study is gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand. They've already had twenty thousand dollars, uh, awarded or given, offered to them from the Auburn Housing.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the right term for them? They still lay at thirty thousand. And I thought, I would like to set aside twenty for them if the grant comes through. And that leaves them ten and that'll give them an idea of what they have to raise. I personally would suggest that they try to get ten from eight of which would let all of us be working together on, on this program. And I, I just think that would, we're not committing anything until they get the grant. And this would let them know that we are willing to participate with them. And I, I think it's a very important study. Uh, we've discussed in the water and sewer group and with them, what they need to do to have housing development. They need to have electricity and they need to have water. And this morning, there was a big discussion. They may need sewage too, but all of this needs to have time to work together. And I feel if they knew that we was interested in their program and would participate in it after they got the grant, that it would help them going forward.
Is that motion?
I would make a move to, to tell them we will set aside twenty thousand for them if they get the grant.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second. And, and I just wanna add, um, I, I've been talking to Carrie. I think she felt confident that they would, someone would make up the ten. I mean, but it was a thirty thousand dollar shortfall.
That's right.
If we did that, uh, I think she was confident that she could get the other ten.
But you don't know what the north.
You.
But we're not gonna spend any money until they get the grant.
Yeah.
No.
They're anticipating to get the full request of their. But, but to your point.
We don't know and we might end up doing more. Or less. Because the last time.
Thank you, Dana.
Opposed. We have to stay what, right?
Done? Huh? Give your hand up.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. On favor? Uh, any opposed?
I oppose.
To oppose?
Yes, I see. Harry. Thank you. We won't spend any money till you get the grant.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. Okay, where are we?
I think you should ask, since this passed, I think you should ask that at least one of your board members sit on that, sit on this committee.
For what reason?
But how did you say? They have a voice.
Punishment.
It's a study.
Yeah, that's a very good idea, Rick. We, we should buy a seat on it.
I just, you automatically get one as, uh, you know, financial party to it.
That's my.
Rachel's going ahead with the seat on it.
No business.
Gonna do a study in one, five minutes.
Yes, no business.
Say again? I could do the study in five minutes. They need a county in, that supports housing and doesn't work against the developers trying to construct housing.
Yeah.
That's what they need.
Alright, you're on two minutes.
No, they, they probably kicked me off.
No, it's a very, how many, how many if you do it?
You gotta, you gotta be able to work with the health department and not have the health department attack the developers. It's gonna be cooperative. Where all the laws are followed, of course, but it's gotta be cooperative. My opinion. You know, that's why, that's why you don't see housing.
Thank you, you're probably, we can all just remember.
Mr. Chair, I have.
Any housing developments in UConn?
Done.
Yeah.
None within the last ten minutes. We all have this.
Done.
Yes, thank you, sir. Um, I would like the opportunity, like when we're making decisions and, you know, having to pass votes on stuff, if we can get a little I would like the opportunity, like when we're making decisions and, you know, having to pass votes on stuff, if we can get a little bit of a. Courtesy heads up by having the requests be placed on the agenda. I usually, you know, I I support these things, especially we know it is in relation to our agency, but I'd like to have. Some knowledge of it prior to someone calling for a vote. It's been a couple of times now that it's literally like with a minute. I make a motion. I've had no additional information and then I'm being asked to vote on something. I do. This is important to me and I like to make thoughtful decisions. So if I may please. In the future, if we want to have us vote on things and allocate monies here, there or wherever. If we could please just have it be placed on the agenda. I do review the agenda before coming. As much notice as I have, so that I'm well prepared to then cast my vote and feel good about it, please. Can I make that request? Thank you.
No business.
Okay, the first item here is I believe I covered earlier. You do have the labor reporting update. Within your package here. Unfortunately, we don't have one of the reps um from the business here, but. Um, I'll reconnect with them and make sure they're available at the next meeting to provide a comprehensive update. They are going to be doing. Monthly reports and they formally engaged and began onsite review with the company at both project locations over the last month. So that is moving along as intended. Um, moving on to uh item B here. This has been in the works uh for quite some time here. Um, within your packet are two different items. First is the letter of intent. Um, for option to purchase and I have shared with the board the verbal agreement we had with uh. Mister and Mrs. Wayne for this portion of property. For the land we own next to the mall. It's approximately twenty acres. Um, terms of the agreement are detailed within within here, but in order to advance this, we also need to engage with. Uh, another firm to do the surveying and permitting work, etcetera. That necessitates uh what we need to as an IDA. What is the word? Dispose of this portion of the property here. So. Um, I had requested that MRB provide a proposal for services on this specifically, largely because we engaged with them over the last year to do the market study. As well as the high level site analysis specific to this property. Um, their proposal is in here. Uh, for your um. Review as well as authorization on that. Uh, between the two. We'll just need a motion to advance.
Do we have some idea how much we're going to spend in selling this property at this point?
It's gonna be a little over sixteen all in. To uh work with uh. MRB group on all of that, but I'm sure it's going to be less if I had to guess. Um, in all cases, we're going to be uh certainly money ahead on this portion of land that is otherwise useless to us. And we we would just otherwise be sitting on it.
We we need a subdivision. We're only selling one lot.
Subdividing it from the rest of the property.
Yeah.
You know, this calls for a subdivision, right?
We need a motion to do what?
You're you're subdivising a portion of the property to another portion there.
I agree with Andy. I'm not creating a subdivision.
It's just separating. It's it's subdivision. It's separating the parcel, that piece.
Either a minor subdivision or like a lot line adjustment. I don't know. I don't know if he's merging it with his existing. Yeah, depends on the town governs it. It's either it it's call it a minor subdivision or a lot line adjustment.
Yeah, so what what I've been told is that it has to, it so that piece can't just be like cut off because. So it needs to be added on to his parcel. So there's multiple surveys that need to happen.
Like I sold lots off. They just had the survey or survey it. Yeah.
But it's not. You're selling a portion of our lot.
Yeah, I've sold a portion of the lot. So I've got thirty acres I sold off a one acre lot.
This is basically, the first portion of it is the surveying work of the different portions. Your parcel, his parcel, and the parcel that's being sold.
But.
And then the other piece, the second piece is an hourly line to just help with anything that needs to be done with the planning board. Um, it's just to help with the paperwork. And it would be hourly not to exceed, so you would only be paying for the work that's actually done.
Oh, not to exceed sixty four hundred, not six. They're not charging us sixty four hundred an hour.
No, no, no.
What's the sixteen thousand?
That that's the total. So the ten is flat and that's.
The ten is a flat fee from our surveying um subconsult.
What was the purchase agreement? Wasn't he paying for the survey?
I I thought so too.
No. No.
You're saying he's only gonna chip in two thousand.
He's he's earmarked two thousand for closing costs related to the deal. It's forty two hundred for. Uh, per acre basis. And what we verbally agreed to with him that's encapsulated is that all costs related to the subdivision would be on the IDA.
So the only cost we are going to pay is the subdivision component?
I've seen that.
So. MRB will handle everything, uh. Permitting or whatever the the subdivision, filing the. Uh, surveys.
The only thing that like so actually filing like the paper with the county clerk's office. It's way more efficient for someone like Rick to do that because. You know, I'm the only one in town. We don't wanna have to have someone come out from Rochester to file papers. Um, but that's just the actual.
For for sixty four hundred an hour, they're coming.
Hour, that's.
I can eat lunch too.
Why why would you go to the town planning board?
This is if it needs to. If we get through the process, um, Michael just asked us to pop something in that like if the planning board needs to review it, we would help. Prepare everything for the planning board. That's all part of the like not to exceed. So if we don't need to learn the planning board. You won't get charged anything for going to the planning board.
Mo- most town zoning codes, you know, have jurisdiction over lot line adjustments in my experience because. You wanna make sure that you're the the parcel that the seller is keeping is you're not converting a conforming lot into a non-conforming lot. So those are the things that a town code enforcement officer or a town planning board would look like.
Each town's a little different.
Yeah, my feeling, I haven't looked at the Aurelius Town. My my feeling is the map's gonna have to be approved. And signed by the chairman of the planning board when it's all said and done.
But you've you've done a lot of them, haven't you, Rick?
Yeah, too many.
Subdivisions?
Too many.
Would you do it for less than six?
Again, like. We will. So like the way that we have this set up, the surveying is the flat fee. The other, the sixty four hundred is like whatever you want us to do, we'll do it. Up to that sixty four hundred dollars. And if you don't want us to do anything, it's gonna do it for you.
Or Justin.
We won't bill you anything on that sixty four hundred. We'll only do you for the work we do on that.
I don't see you putting that in a minute.
That need a motion.
I'd like to clarify that sixty.
I'll start again later.
Thank you. Discussion.
No, I just.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You're good, Trace. What what are we down to now?
Uh, item seven D.
D?
D.
Public relations communications.
I suppose you're a requested item.
You don't remember the email.
Oh, the email I sent. No, well, yeah, but that. Better go before this motion to adjourn. Yeah, the email I sent was regarding, um. How did I send the email?
Capusa.
Capusa, yes, yes. So. Where are we? So I asked for two things, but. Do we have anything from other than the chair here from Capusa? So I asked for two things. The first thing was. It it in in the article, in the newspaper article, Capusa was brought in as. A reason why we did or did not do something. And then go to the city. However, that was never discussed as a full board type of discussion. It was discussed by by some members, but it was never discussed as a full board, nor did the full board say. No, we're not going to, we're gonna forego going to the city. Because they are not going to be accepting Capusa. Okay, so. I guess today we need to decide or 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 maybe to your point, we can vote next month. Is, are we in fact? Supporting the PUSA? A- a- and and whether it be financially, whether it would be space. What what are we doing that we can say to a to a newspaper reporter? Well, city didn't wanna take a PUSA, so we're not going to the city.
I can explain just my position on it.
It isn't a lease agreement that that we that the landlord is allowing us. Oh, I understand that. Right, right. That's all I need to do. Right, I and I understand it. And we were supposedly gonna be allowing a lot of different other people there. However. There was never any type of decision made by this board to say. Hey, here's an opportunity for us to go to the city.
We're not gonna talk about all the decisions we haven't made, are we?
Well, no, I just, I guess what I'm saying now is 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 that the the full board's position. That we are going to be subsidizing Capusa, whether it be rent. My second question was.
I don't think we said that.
What? Well, don't. Nobody had to say it. I'm saying, is it going to be this board's position? I didn't say anybody said that.
Right.
My second question is, if we are going to subsidize Capusa or support Capusa, because that's. That was the term you support. What do we mean by that? Do we give them money? Do we give them space? What is what does support mean? Because as a board, we need to decide. Exactly what we're going to be doing.
But there's nothing on the table, so I don't know what we're talking about.
But Andy, there is something on the table. We just, we made a decision with Capusa. Being involved. And now you're saying, well, it's not on the table anymore. It's like.
John Peter. Let's go back to just the city's offer. My position was not whether Capusa was there or whether we were involved with them. If the city offers us office space and then tells us they're going to tell us who can be in that office space. That's no longer acceptable. If they tell us we can have that office space, but I don't like John Montone, John, that mission.
That's all right.
He can't be in the city, then we don't take the space to step. That is unacceptable as far as I'm concerned. To have an office space offered and then restrictions put on it that they're gonna tell us who can be in our office space.
That's got enough. That was my position too.
May I, may I may I respond? But the 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 article in the newspaper that you had the conversation with. You're singling out Capusa, and I don't think that what. I'm in front of what you're saying is we all didn't have this conversation where you where you who knew this and Ray, apparently you did too. Knew that the city said Capusa is not going to be allowed here. And so you guys made this decision. I am saying that nobody.
This place, they make, the board made the decision about where to go.
Oh, wait. In the newspaper, the expl- the 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 rationale was, we decided to go to Carr because. The city said no to Capusa. And also, the utility cost is going to be. Whatever. That those were the the two things that were named in the article. May I please make fit finish, please? And so when that conversation came to me, I was in the dark because one. I, we sat here and we had a very long conversation about supporting going to Carr versus um staying with the city. And nobody said here, well, the city said Capusa is a problem for them. And on that note, we are not going to go with the city. Nobody used that as their explanation why they were. Strongly supporting going to Carr. No one did. So now in the article, in the newspaper. You're saying factually, this is the reason why we made the decision to go to Carr. And to me, that's inaccurate. Because I sat here and I didn't hear anybody say. City of Auburn said no to Capusa, and that means it's a it's a no go for us. We're not making this deal. That's that's the concern that I have. Also, I distinctly recall saying. We are thinking about the costs associated with going with the car building and whether or not it would be better financially to stay at the city. And and someone had made the comment about and the utility, what we're gonna pay. And I remember saying, are we suggesting? That the cost associated with the utility in the city is going to be vastly more than the expense we're going to incur being at the car building. Right? And it was like, of course not. That's not the case. So how are we saying in the newspaper that the utility costs and Capusa? We did, because it's a, there's an article that points to that.
Board did not say.
I know, but the board was representing.
So I'm not interested in defending the newspaper articles.
Well.
We're just here to make board decisions.
I agree with you, but this says public relation and communication. And that article in particular. Caused a lot of stir. People that knows that I sit on the board asked about it, and I don't think.
Ray and I just made up that thing that the city said that Capusa was not welcome in the city.
Well, I know. I don't think you made it up, but you didn't share it with us. You didn't share it in the board discussion. And so what I'm, what I, what for me. I know that there are conversations that take place outside of me. I don't need to be part of all of it. We have a chairman and a very effective, you know. Executive director. But I think then you, it should be shared with the board as a whole. We shouldn't have like certain people with with knowledge and nobody else does, and then come to us to ask us to all vote on it. When this article came out, it represented C C I D A. And I I. I I I, Mister Mister Marshall, I was in my head. I'm like, if anybody should have made that comment, maybe the chairman or. The executive director. I I was just thinking because I, when I was asked about it, I had no idea.
Do we have a motion on the table or is it just a general discussion?
So. About when I, John, go ahead. Capusa is very interested in what they're supposed to do, and that is with electricity. The program that Michael brought up that's at uh Geneva on December first. There's, there's at least two, John Montone and Joe. Help me with his name, so. Are both registered to go to that. I hope that Bob Shea is gonna go and I'm gonna go to that. That's a very, very important thing for us going forward with any of these housing developments or with any of our projects. To know that there's electricity available. If we're going to continue to give pilots. To solar farms and wind farms. The only reason to do that is if we can get part of that electricity to use locally instead of all of it be sent down to New York City. And that's the only group that has the background and the ability to handle that electricity and make it available locally. I think no matter what you think of them in the past, they're very important at this time. For us to go forward with any kind of development, because electricity is going to be a major item, not only the cost. But the availability of it. And my opinion is they're very important and they're very important to work with us as a group. If you wanna set down how you want them to work with us, we can have that discussion, but.
Until Capusa comes forward with a proposal, I don't see much to discuss.
Right, so I asked.
They haven't had.
Three months ago, we had, three months ago, I asked for a proposal, nothing was done. But let's let's forget that for a second. Mister Marshall, I'm not, I'm not here to argue the uh whether Capusa is good or bad or whether we need them or not. Okay, I I'm not because I don't know anything about it. I nothing been presented. My point, and you said it, and Andy, I do believe you and I totally agree with you. We have board decisions, full board decisions. So I totally agree with you. But we can't have sometimes full board decisions and not full board decisions all the time. So my point was, you you believe that Capusa was important. And this is what you, your belief was that when you said it is unacceptable to me. That somebody offers space and then puts. That somebody offers space and then puts conditions on it. I'm okay with that.
Yes.
So the issue for me is. That it was only unacceptable to you, the entire board didn't get to vote on it. I might be okay with that.
No, we do.
Andrew, please. I'm 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 saying something, so. I'm making a point and the point is, I don't, I'm not arguing whether it was acceptable to you or not. You're absolutely right to say anything you would like to say. I I I have no issue with that. But when you say it. And is perceived to represent the entire board that did not say it.
You perceive perceive that. I never ever intended anything. To represent the entire board. He talked to me about why I personally voted to go to the car building instead of to the city hall. And I told him exactly what I just told you here. It had nothing to do with the name of Capusco and it had to do with having office space. Offered with restrictions on it that somebody else was going to tell us who could be in our office space. That's what I told him. I don't think I even read the article that he put in. I I'm not, I don't. Believe that everything comes out of the newspaper is the way it was meant to somehow. So I'm I told him precisely what I just told you.
Right, John, and I am not arguing what you said, what you believe, what, all I said with putting forward is this. If we as a board. Vote on something, then we voted uh, as an entire board.
Yes.
Okay. If you believe something but it never comes up to a board vote. Then the the whole board did not vote and it cannot be represented in any way that it did. Okay, whether the whether the paper misrepresents you or not, if it's perceived that the. It wasn't Mister Marshall says it was CC IDA is not doing this. Whether they were right or wrong in doing that, that's what went out in the paper. I'm not condemning you. I'm just pointing out. That we as a board. Need to vote.
A- absolutely. We as a board voted to go to the car building.
Not what, no, we we, yeah, I'm sorry, we did. Not everybody agreed.
And he asked me why I was opposed to going to city hall when the office space was free. And I told him my. I told him my only reason for not, there were the other reasons. I questioned whether. We should be in city hall, but that was done in my business. That's a decision the board needs needed to make.
Well, I would say we need a social media.
We do.
Uh, so we talked about that. But frankly, I'm not just interested in discussing matters that are not in front of the board. So nobody's asked for funding, so I I think we should just drop that issue. And I would like to move that we adjourn and go home.
I.
One comment.
I I I can't. I can't, and I made one statement.
I think too. Let's get under a half an hour. I don't have my.
I think with Capusa being really involved with this meeting on December first. I want this board to know that. They have been registered to go to that and I think they're gonna be a big part of that meeting. And we should, after that meeting. And we should have whatever discussion on them John thinks we should have, because we need to at some point. Get to the point where we would like to work together instead of fight with each other.
You know, one one point I'll make and and um. I I've been very careful to not throw Capusa into the middle of it because uh, I I don't believe um. Some of the stories out there, we've been um, this merch pretty, pretty bad. Are we get funding and then it's taken away? Do you, um, county public utility is a county agency for the benefit of energy, including um, renewal. Renewable energy. Michael Tracy and I went, attended a meeting yesterday sponsored by Nice Egg and R G and E. And a lot of times they hit on, and we're gonna go to another one December first. A lot of times they hit on two things. The deficiency of energy in this area and the cost associated with what's common. Major, major increases. In those areas. So, a- and I'm, if you don't wanna do anything about it as a solution to what we're gonna purchase possibly. Some land for development, which Capusa could be an asset to this agency. Fine. I'll take the agency elsewhere, but we should be talking about what's best for this county. Keep, put Capusa as a county agency. And you know, I get all kinds of crap about whether they like it or not like it. We just wanna to be an asset to the community and you know, I I I'm not getting that, so.
And I'm thinking.
I haven't asked for anything.
Yeah, I'm thinking actually, you know, water, sewer, land, electric. It is far more related to the IDA's mission than housing is.
Did you guys not get that out of meeting?
I agree.
Okay, moving right along.
Well, I I I'm gonna say one final thing and that is.
You already had a final thing.
My. Put your soapbox next to.
I will. My fin- my final thing is, this is all of a sudden being made to be about Capusa. Okay, that's not. My point was, and I'll make it clear. My point was that we are a board and we vote uh, as a board and we. With the same information. Each one has a vote as a board, so please don't tell me that we voted with X, Y or Z included in there. What it was never discussed.
Who told you that?
Andrew, I was sitting right here. Nobody asked to tell me. I was sitting here, okay? I'm making a point and you wanna make it about Capusa. It's not about Capusa. No, I not.
John.
Yes.
Point taken, John. Thank you.
Can we adjourn?
Yeah. One co- Mike, one thing I'm gonna say about all this topic. What is the one thing I always say to you when we talk about board stuff? It's a board decision.
Yes.
Have I not said? If I ever says my decision?
No.
Or Herb's decision or John's decision, what do I tell you when you put things together?
I'd say full board decision.
And have I stuck by that?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we adjourn?
Yes. Is there a motion?
Thank you.
Hey, folks.